We thank you, Father, for the school board members. We pray, Father, for each one of them that you will bless them. We pray for wisdom and knowledge and understanding. Father God, we want to lift up every student in this school system, Lord, that they will be blessed, Father, with the education that they're going to receive. We pray, Father, for this meeting tonight, that you will take care of every problem that needs to be addressed. Father, that you will just bless each decision that's made. We pray for wisdom and knowledge and understanding in every way. We just thank you and praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you very much. And then we have some adorable first graders here, I believe, to lead us in the pledge. All right. We are excited to have some awesome first graders here today to lead the Pledge of Allegiance. We have Kason Sanchez, Stella Adams, Aubriella Rivas, Brody Harris, Frankie Morris, and Carter Cooper. Great job, guys. Thank y'all. All right. Well, and as timing would have it, I have 6:00. So let's call this meeting into order. Roll call, please.
Okay.
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
Yelker?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes, here. All right. Appreciate everyone for being here tonight, including our adorable guests that left before all the excitement started. Support Employee of the Month.
Yep. So we've got two wonderful support employees. Let's start with the high school first and board members. Kevin Frye.
Is it on? Our support, I am excited to be here to introduce our Support Employee of the Month here at the high school. And she's one of those that honestly, I should have put a chair up here because she would have loved to stand on it and just all the attention on her. Not really. She doesn't even want us to talk about her. But she does, I'm excited to get to do this. She's one of those that she's at the front of our office. So she's that first face that people see when they walk into the high school. She is dependable. She very rarely misses. She's always early, works late if needed, whatever's needed. To help somebody else out to get something done. She goes above and beyond. And we truly, truly appreciate her. This year, she's been with us five years. This year has been a little bit more challenging because usually we have two secretaries up front. And, you know, the high school, just under 700 students, a lot of activities. It can be hectic up there at times. And this year, we had, our other secretary had some healthy issues the last three or four months. So a lot has been put on this person. I haven't announced it yet. And she has just, she's above and beyond of what we could expect of her. And we just want her to know how much we appreciate her. So this is a great opportunity for that. And before I introduce her, I do want to read what she, on her questionnaire, what she said she loved about her job. She said, "Getting to be the face of PHS that is a part of setting the tone for all students at our campus. I get to contribute to student growth and success while supporting our educational mission and bringing life to every parent every day." So Ms. Chloe House is the High School Support Employee of the Month.
Next, Ms. Kelly. You want to come out for her? And Brody, just stay up here for just a minute. And we'll get the next one. And we'll do a group picture.
Okay. I would like to introduce everyone to Callie McLendon. Callie first came to Poto Schools to be an administrative assistant at the Poto Virtual Center, which kind of operated, I think, about a year after COVID. She came to the upper elementary office in October of this year to fill the open office clerk position. And the amazing thing about Callie is she just stepped in and she was a natural. She picked up on everything so very quickly. And she's not afraid to dive in and help whenever and wherever needed. When I asked the faculty and staff to tell me some things they think that make Callie special, they all said basically the same thing, because it's all true. She, Callie, is so kind. She always has a smile on her face. She always has a positive attitude, no matter what the situation. And today, the situation was an upset parent on the phone. But she stays calm and is kind to them. And she is always quick to lend a helping hand to any of the teachers or staff that come in that need something. We are very lucky to have Callie as one of our team members at the upper elementary. And I would like to thank you, Callie, for everything that you do. We all love you, and we couldn't make it without you.
And I do want to say that each of these certificates have a Walmart gift card. So that's First National Bank. They're the sponsor of this. And so you'll see them on the certificate as well. They're also going to do a Support Employee of the Year in May, I think. So excited about that.
Do we have any comments from the public?
We do not.
I understand that Mr. Colwell wants to be here through the whole meeting and us put him at the end of the agenda?
That is correct. As we asked, we said, no, he's got to go now.
Yes, I've got two board meetings tonight. This is my season to make all board meetings across the county. So again, my name's Michael Colwell. I'm the campus director here at Kiamish Tech Poto. And on behalf of our superintendent, Shelley Free, just want to say thank you to the Poto Board, Superintendent Kipnik, Ms. Tillery, just for the relationship that we have with the school. We're not guaranteed any of our students, so it's nice to have the relationship that we do. So this is our annual Partner School Report. And on the front page there, you will see some information that's specific to Poto Schools. For the current school year, 2024-25, you can see that we're serving 106 of your high school sophomores, if they're in biomed, and then juniors and seniors for all of our other programs. So you'll see there in the blue, the blue figures, that represents students from your school district. And you can see the programs that they are spread across. Pretty much have someone in every program. Of course, welding students here go to Poto and not the Spiral Campus. And then the green figures represent adult students from the Poto School District. That is something new that we're tracking. So you can kind of see any adults that might be attending our programs. Any questions about any of that information? I did look before I left campus. And you have, we're serving 106 students this year. Next year, you have 107 new applicants, students that are trying to come next year. So I don't know where we're going to fit them all, but it's a good problem to have. And again, we're very pleased for those numbers. At the bottom of this page where it says by the numbers, this is, we track our graduates a year out after they complete tech. And we see, you know, what they're doing. Are they working, going to school? And some other things that we ask them. But we had a 97% completion and retention rate on our graduates from last year, meaning they completed or continued their education in their training. 93% of our graduates were considered positive placement, which means they are working in the field they trained in, they went on to higher ed, or they entered into the military. Our graduates last year received 768 nationally recognized certifications. These are industry-recognized certifications that put our graduates to work. And our average wage last year was $17.27 of our graduates. On the next page is just a snapshot of our entire campus. Throughout our campus, we serve 400, this year, we're serving 422 students. And you can see that how that's broken down there. The little black stick figures represent high school students. And the green ones, adult students in this scenario. Just so you're aware, we, our programs, except for practical nursing and our paramedic programs, are offered to high school students first. So juniors and seniors, again, unless it's biomed, get first choice at those seats. Anything that's leftover, adult students can apply for. So you can see there, we're very heavy high school, about 80% high school students and about 20 adult. Any questions about any of that data? And then on the back page, that's just a look of our business and education councils. Each of our program has a council that's made up of industry experts, whether it be in welding or electrical field. They come in twice a year to help our instructors stay abreast of new technologies, stay up with curriculum, just emerging trends that we're seeing in that market. And so we value our business education councils heavily. They serve as worksite learning places for internships, apprenticeships, job shadowing, things like that. So you may recognize some of those individuals on there, but we are very appreciative of our business and education councils. Next month, I probably will have the academic MOU ready for you, Mr. Kipnik, and our bus contracts hopefully soon. Just want to say thank you for approving those and for always working with us on those. It does mean a lot to us. And again, we could not operate without our partnership that we have with all of our schools, but especially Poto Schools. And so we appreciate that relationship. Do you have any questions for me? That's easy.
I do appreciate every, all the services and opportunities that you do provide our students, though. I think that there's some great programs out there that our students are lucky to be able to take advantage of, so.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Have a good evening.
True.
All right. Discussion about to approve or not approve a contract agreement with Sourcewell for the '25-'26 school year.
Yep. So I'm going to let Devin talk a little bit about the Sourcewell piece. We've moved it up ahead of our consent agenda items because if it is approved, it's an item in our POs. So we want to make sure we get it ahead of that.
Okay. So Sourcewell is a cooperative purchasing program. It's a national program. There are others similar, such as Omnia, TIPS, other things that allow us to purchase goods from certain contractors. And they've already been bid since we're looking at some mini buses is what we're trying to look at here. So they have reached a contract with Collins, which is an outfitter for the minibus that's either on a Ford Chevy chassis. But they've already agreed with that contract and signed it nationally. So any of the dealers that deal with Collins are also included in that. So that's what we're looking at. It's no cost to the school district at all. We sign up to be a member. Like I said, there's no obligation. And I do know that we do get that discount. There's a discount associated with that by using Sourcewell. In this particular case, it's a couple thousand dollars, you know, that would save us by using this contract, so.
And they're on the state-approved contract list?
Well, they're based out of Minnesota. Our board policy is to what the school board, it's not necessarily that it has to be under state contract. The dealership we're looking at is actually in Texas. But this would satisfy that if this was approved.
I guess, I probably didn't ask my question very well. But they're like, so the list of people that we can go ahead and contract with without having to get bids, they're on that state-approved list?
Yes. Other districts such as Norman, Tottenham City use Sourcewell as well.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? Entertain a motion.
I move we approve the contract.
I'll second his motion.
Roll call, please.
McGee?
Yes.
Yelker?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
And I probably should have said this at the front end before y'all voted to make sure that you were good. But it's just helping out. One of the things that we've got is, how old are our 14-passenger buses?
Um, anywhere from 10 to 17 years old.
And so what this is enabling us to do, if we try to get one ordered in the state right now, there's a waiting list. I mean, it could be six months before we finally get it. So with these being on the ground, available, we can have them here in a month. So it makes it where we can really take a big step forward on our transportation fleet. So I'm super excited about being able to get our transportation fleet where it needs to be. We just went through a pretty hectic season. And having some additional 14-passengers, which you don't have to have the CDL for, makes it much easier for us than what we currently have.
Especially with the spring, when you have golf, junior high, senior high, baseball, soccer, track, you know, there's lots of activities that go on in the spring.
Does that leave anyone to have any questions or comments? I'd entertain a motion to approve our minutes on the regular board meeting from February.
I'm sorry. Before we go there, we have a little hiccup. One of the other items that we want to get done before we get to our consent agenda items is we would, at this time, like to move new business up because we got a contract over the weekend that we need to go ahead and get approved. It's a contract for TransAct Communication. So that's the item in your packet that just got put in there. It has software services agreement at the top. And then it has, looks like a quote of cost on it. So I'm going to let Devin talk about this. But this is something that is really huge for us. Can you kind of go into a little bit of why we need this as well?
So what this is, this company, it's a couple, two different pieces. It's a routing software that will help us gain some efficiencies in our bus routing. And it's also a, they call it a Safe Driver 360, which is a ridership program that we will, starting when we, once we get it implemented, hopefully by the end of this school year, if not for sure, by the start of the '25-'26 school year, where students will badge onto a tablet that will be mounted on the bus, okay? So it will recognize that that student belongs on that bus, okay? If it doesn't recognize that it's supposed, that they're supposed to be on that bus, it'll give the driver a notification saying, hey, something's not right here. We need to double-check what happens there. So we have instances where kiddos get on the wrong bus for whatever reason. So this will help alleviate some of that. It will also, they have a parent app. They're working on the second revision of that app right now that will enable parents to set up a geofence around their home or other location that their child is being dropped off. So they will get a notification that, hey, the school bus is about to arrive at your location, either at your house or wherever. So it will also enable us, the unlimited texting will enable us to get information out to parents quicker if there happens to be an incident that a bus is delayed for whatever reason. Let's say it happens halfway through the stop. It will be set up where you can notify parents from stops number 10 through 20 that, hey, there's been a delay. We've had a flat tire, whatever. We're going to be a 15-minute delay. And we can do that all in one fell swoop with a text that's just sent to those parents that pertain to. So it saves a lot of time and effort and gets a lot quicker response to the parents when there has been a delay.
Which I would say that's been the toughest part is when we have a delay, we don't know what kids are still on the bus and who's not and getting, figuring out how to communicate with those parents. The elementaries can probably, you know, attest to that. It's very difficult to try. And so basically, we just have to call everybody. And if, even if they're off the bus and they're like, what's going on? And so from the communication standpoint, I think something like this is really going to help us be better communicators with parents that have kids on the bus.
The sites will also be able to see where the buses are because they're the ones that get the first phone call, right? From the parent wondering where their student is. So they will have that visibility as well and should be able to help answer a lot of those questions before calling over radio to a bus, trying to get that information. It just streamlines things quite a bit, I mean.
Can you also talk about, because this wasn't the only one we looked at, how this compares price-wise to some of the others that we looked at and benefits that this one has? Why did we choose this one over the others?
Yeah. So we looked at quite a few. There's quite a few companies that have similar things. They offer, a lot of them offer routing. A lot of them offer ridership, what they call the tablet solution. There's even modules for activity trips only, maintenance modules and various things. We decided to just use these two because they were most pertinent to us. And for the cost, we felt like it was justified. You know, some things we could use, but based on our volume, it really doesn't make sense to do that. But Fort Smith Schools are using the TransAct routing software. I did go over, one day last week, and visited with them. They've been using it for a few years now and really, and they're seven times the size we are as far as enrollment, you know, about 14-plus thousand students. A lot more routes than we have. But this is what they use for their routing. And you can keep track. It has a lot of detail to it. You also can manipulate things, play with things, what they call a sandbox, to try to optimize the best routing for your situation. And I really feel like we'll gain some efficiencies as well with this, so. This is a three-year deal, too, by the way.
Can the kiddos, do they badge off?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So it'll count up when they badge on. It'll count up so the driver will see how many students are on their bus. And then when they badge off, it will count back down. So the driver can see, okay, I don't have anybody left. I mean, you could.
Those kiddos are probably asleep.
Yeah. Right. Right. I mean, there's other things that go along with that. But they should be able to see it immediately.
And I would say one of the other big advantages with this, being a sub-bus driver, when I get on routes, I don't know all the routes. And when we're short drivers and we've got to throw somebody on a route, I'm talking to kids, hey, you've been on this for two years. Where am I going? And that's what all of our sub-drivers are having to do. What this does is it gives turn-by-turn navigation for a sub-driver. When I get on, I can get on any bus with this and know where the heck I'm going based on what kids are on the bus. So from that end, we no longer have to try to figure out from kids where the heck we're supposed to go, which is scary in its own right.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, we kind of have handwritten instructions, but not turn-by-turn navigation.
It's showing 20 tablets here. There's more buses than that, correct?
We have 19 routes, daily routes. So we didn't have an extra one, just in case we had a, we have a few more mounts also so we could swap a tablet to another bus if we need to. So, yeah. We do have more vehicles than that, but 19 daily routes. And we have a few sub-buses. And then the rest are activities. So we don't, we won't have this on, but. Any questions? Any other questions?
Even though it's new business, we would want to go ahead and take action to approve or not approve this item, this contract.
Does anyone have any, is everyone okay with us moving this out of order? Okay. If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve or not approve the software service agreement proposed.
I might motion we approve software service agreement.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Yelker? Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Heck? McGee?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Are we ready for minutes?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion with regards to the minutes of the regular board meeting from February 10th, 2020-25, 2025. Anybody?
You're not going to get it.
I'm not going to get it. I got it first. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Yelker?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Heck? McGee?
Yeah.
All right. Financial reports, encumbrances, and change orders.
So if you'll look with me to the financial statements, we'll start with the month of February, looking at the general fund. Our revenue actually went down for the month of February, but that's just a timing issue. Last year, we, the adverorum came in about half in January, half in February because of the extension. This year, most of the adverorum came in January because the extension is a little bit later this year before everyone noticed they could pay late. So that's just a timing issue there. Our expenditures for the month of February are down slightly from last year at this time. Last year, in the month of February, we bought some laptops out of our ESRA fundings, and we did not purchase that this year. So that's the cause of our expenditures to be down some for the month of February in our general fund. And then if you'll go over to the building fund, our revenue is up compared to last year at this same time. And it is also a timing issue. We received our Red Bud funding in the month of February this year. Last year, we received it in January. So really, our revenue is actually up a little bit for Red Bud. Looking at our expenditures for the month of February, they are up this year. And that is due to us finishing up the turf with the logos for the month of February and also us making our first loan payment for our building and property that we purchased last year. Going over to the child nutrition, our revenue is down slightly. And it's also a timing issue. I don't know if we flip back and forth. Our state aid matching came in last year in January. This year, I mean, this year it came in January, last year it came in February. And it's about $4,500. So that threw us off a little bit in our revenue. Our expenditures for child nutrition are almost the same. If you look at last year's, we're just up just about $900, a little bit more in services that we have in child nutrition going out this year. And then if you'll go to the year-to-date sheet, and if we look at our year-to-date, our revenue, as I've stated before, we are up year-to-date, and that is due to the state aid that we received last January. So last year, we started receiving it in January. This year, we've received it all the way through. So that's, our revenue is up, which is a good thing. Our expenditures are up just slightly year-to-date, and that's just really due to some services and supplies there for this year. Our fund balance, we're general, looks very good for this year. But I do just kind of remind you that we do have some activity buses hopefully coming in in April. And then we have some more expenditures probably coming up that you just, we just heard about as well. Looking at our building fund year-to-date, our revenue is down. But last year, we had a $300,000 transfer that went into building fund. So that did not happen this year. So that's what, why our revenue looks down for year-to-date. Our expenditures are up this year. We've had the turf project. We've had the renovation at 3003 Broadway. We've had drainage off of Mockingbird, some parking lot expenditure. That's all came out of building fund. And I do just want to remind you, on the renovation, we did last year receive about $331,000 for that renovation that we $331,000 for that renovation that we did have as revenue that went in last June to kind of offset some of that expenditure there. In child nutrition, our revenue is up because federal funding is up for child nutrition and our expenditures are also up due to the same thing. We have more students eating because of the meals being free. So revenue is up and also expenditures are up for child nutrition, but it's still looking at a good balance. Then the last column, our total operations, our revenues are up for the year and also our expenditures are up for the year, but still setting it at a very good operation balance in all three funds. Now, if you'll look with me at the encumbrance register, we'll start with the general fund. On page one, close to the top, PO number 865, that is for two school boards that will go at the high school gym. And then on page two, close to the top, number PO 889, that is to replace a HVAC system at the high school. And because it's a replacement, we can actually pay for that out of the general fund. Going just a couple down from there, PO number 891, that is for a lawnmower with all the attachments that go along with that lawnmower. And then two down, number PO 893, that is also additional lawnmower with all the area that we have to cover and we are, these are really needed, most of ours are owned, so Devin will attest to that, these are really needed. And it's going to come, hopefully it'll speed up their mowing process that, that way. On page three, at the top, PO number 910, that is for some tables, desks, chairs at primary. PO number 911, 96 desk at the upper is that one. And then if you'll go with, all the way down to 923, it is actually 243 desks and chairs for the high school and the PKMS. So these are items that are actually needed for the students. We've kind of looked through everything and they need to be replaced and so that's why they're all on there at one time.
And I want to touch on that real quick. We, we communicated with all of our site principals too. One of the things, when we went into the two-story building at the high school, we didn't replace any of that furniture. So the majority of this, a big piece of that, is just trying to get furniture the way it should have been probably back then. But you know how it is, when you're in a bond, you're pretty tight and you're just trying to get things done. So our classroom furniture just needed to get an upgrade. So every building except for SEC is a part of the furniture upgrade. So this year, it ended up being five classes worth of furniture for the, the high school. The rest usually did about three or so. Because we still have some good furniture, it's just we have plenty that needs to be starting to get replaced. We don't want our kids sitting in broke, broke desks or any of those type of things, which is kind of where we're at. So we need to get some of that stuff fixed and just have nice furniture for our kiddos.
And then PO number 927, that is on the TransAct that we just, that Devin just talked about, and that is for three years. And PO number 928, that is for two of those 2025 Collins mini buses that Devin had talked about a little bit.
Yeah, and those are those 14 passengers. So, you know, for us, they'll be, they're all white, all of our fleet's going to be white, we'll get those wrapped as well. It'll be a really big addition for us.
And then if you'll move on with me to the building fund, there are actually two POs. The first one is to Michael Rowley, and that is for him to look at the PKMS main gym.
Yeah, and I want to touch on that. After the bond, one of the things that was pretty glaring is that regardless if we pass the bond or not, we've got to figure out how to fix our PKMS gym. We can't have the way it is right now. I know that's been that way for a long time, but moving forward, we just felt that was something we had to, we had to fix. So basically, what we're doing is we're, we know that it's going to be a pretty hefty price tag to get HVAC in that gym, but what we're going to do is we're just taking that out of our, our payments towards the land. We were hoping to get ahead and pay that off a little quicker, but ultimately, we're just taking, taking money that we would be giving to land and taking interest off and we're just moving that over and doing the PKMS HVAC. We can't do the others. I know the principal's like, yes, but we, we can't do the others at this time, maybe down the road, but for now, the PKMS, we felt we had to fix.
And then PO number 20 on building fund, that is for our virtual academy building and so we need to replace the carpet, the flooring, really give it a update there.
Yeah, and I'll touch on that too. So the building that we're currently in, we can't, we can't have kids in there with the way that carpet is and the way it looks. So that's a, that's a pretty good price for us to come in and do all that we're doing. So Devin, you want to take a minute and kind of explain what all we're doing with, with that renovation?
Yeah, so we're replacing all the carpet in the, in the building, putting epoxy flooring such as we've done at the PKMS in the hallway and front entrance there, removing paneling, you know, if somebody's looking for some, maybe I have some surplus here. So doing some repainting, also in the, in the main hallway, it's redoing the drop ceiling and, and lighting that goes along with that. So it'll, it'll give, and doing, re-covering the, for Michael countertops, getting away from the dusty blue countertop. So a nice, nice upgrade and it'll look, look more up-to-date.
And then our last encumbrance is for our cafeteria. The first one, PO 41, that is our normal OPA for this month. And then our last one, PO number 44, so Cindy went through to see what all the needs were and so we're starting to see what we need to do for this year and next year. That PO is for some wire shelving. We still have some wooden shelving that we probably need to get out of the cafeteria and put wiring in. There's some work tables, electric can openers, food slot, it's a whole list of items that she listed there that are needed in all five of the sites, so. And I also, if you don't mind, I'm sorry, if you'll go past all the financial information and go to the blue sheet, which is our activity fund, I just kind of want to go over the balance with you. And you flip it to the back side, so it's on the blue sheet, and if you'll flip it to the back. Our activity fund ended the month of February with a balance of $772,435 and that is up from last year.
And we do have some of that money in the CD gaining interest, correct?
Yes, yes, we do. We have a CD for both the activity fund and the general fund. Does anyone have any questions?
There's no questions or comments. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I might motion approve the final reports and encumbrances.
False.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 All right, site pres, not any change orders. All right, okay. Site presentation, PKMS.
Yep, so if we can go, we'll take the front row and we'll let PKMS do their presentation.
Is it on? Can you guys hear me? Can you see me? That's what I'm kind of wondering about. Well, thank you guys for the opportunity to talk about our school and to share some things about our identity and our climate, academics, and then our connections to the community. I can promise you, our teachers are working really hard every day for every pirate every day. And our theme this year is let your bright shine and that's why our presentation is so bright. We've got lots of neon colors at school this year and it's kind of helped us get through these dreary winter months. So the first thing I'm going to talk to you about is our school identity and we're really proud of the identity that we try to cultivate at PKMS. And throughout the slideshow, we have a few pictures of our students and teachers, just to kind of give you a snapshot of what school looks like at PKMS. And the first picture that we have, this, we have Friday pep rallies at school and so one of the pictures is of some of our kiddos after one of our pep rallies with our dance team. And then this is Mr. Brayden and this is on one of our Feel Good Fridays. He's wearing his Feel Good Fridays t-shirt and he is our teacher of the year this year and we're sure proud of him. Our vision at PKMS is for all students to feel that they belong and that they can succeed in the positive, innovative, safe and supportive school environment we provide. And that is what drives the decisions that we make and the actions that we take each day with our kiddos. For our demographics, we have 38 faculty and staff members. We have 295 fifth and sixth grade students. We have seven sections of all of our core content areas, which allows us a 21-to-1 student-teacher ratio. This year, our economically disadvantaged percentage is 84%. We have 16% English language learners, meaning that those are students for whom a language other than English is spoken in their home. We have 31% of our students who qualify for our Gifted Talented Program and 27% of our students are served either on an IEP or a 504. And then 32% of our students are tribal and have a CDIB card that allows them to be served through our Johnson O'Malley program. Some awards and recognitions and successes that we're really proud of. In 2024, we had a pretty good decrease in attendance issues and I'm going to attribute that to the leadership of our assistant, Ms. Collins. That's what happens when you taught for a really long time and she used to be your student, Ms. Oliver. And she really worked last year and has continued that this year, working on attendance and it's made a big improvement at our site. We also more than doubled our, our library circulations last year over the previous year by several thousand books that were checked out in our library last year over the previous year and that's continuing this year. So those are a couple of things that we're really proud of. In 2023 and in 2024, on our state A-through-F report card, we received an A rating in English language proficiency and that's based on WEAD assessments. And that is a national assessment that tests our English language learners on reading, writing, speaking, and also listening. Actually, a very difficult assessment and it's much different than most of the assessments that our students take. It's a very intensive one. So this is a huge win for our school and our district and really speaks to the investment that our district has made in our EL program. We also, last year, received a B rating on our report card for chronic absenteeism and, you know, I'm kind of an April myself, I'm not really excited about a B typically, but considering that the previous year, we had a C and in previous years, even a D, the fact that we're moving in the right direction is something that I really want to celebrate. Last year and again this year, PKMS is a finalist, or was a finalist last year and is a finalist this year for the Professional Oklahoma Educators Foundation Excellence in Education School of Character Award. And that's an application that we submit, a pretty detailed explanation of what our social-emotional learning program looks like and how we develop character in our students. Each year, they choose an elementary school, a middle school and a high school. And last year and this year, we're their middle, middle school and I'm hoping that we're their big winner in April at their banquet. We're also a member of the A-plus school network and that is a grant application process. And once you're accepted into that network, you receive support through the Oklahoma A-plus network as long as you remain active and we are. And we have received at this point $75,000 worth of training for our teachers in project-based learning and best teaching practices. So we're really proud of what we've learned through them and continue to learn and proud to be a part of that network. Some site improvements that we have been able to make over the last four years, actually five years, we have replaced hundreds of ceiling tiles that were missing or damaged. This past summer, I was really excited when board members came and got to walk on our new epoxy floor, which is one of the biggest improvements that we've had on our site. We've also been able to paint our exterior signs. Over Christmas, we were able to paint the upper gym and that was a huge improvement. We have painted every wall and pretty much everything that's standing at PKMS during the last five years and added murals. Last year, the district added security fencing at PKMS at the back of the campus. We've removed truckloads, little truckloads full of things that our board had approved as surplus items. And we've been able to replace the roof on the main building and cafeteria building. The cafeteria building was just last summer. And then we also added vinyl names and numbers to our classrooms and various areas throughout the campus. So we're really excited about the things that we're seeing happening at campus, on our campus. It really makes it a more inviting environment. And when you have a nice place to learn, it's easier for students to learn. And I want to take a minute just to thank the elementary schools for the leadership that they provide and the teachers who are doing the hard work, writing the foundation so that when we get our kids as fifth and sixth graders, they're ready to be learners of middle school content and they certainly do a great job. This is, I believe, in one of our science classes, some of our really cute kiddos. And so what we're proud of is that our students are performing well above stage performance in English and in math and we're proud of that. We always want to do better, but more than that, we are doing better than our previous years. So we're continuing to improve those percentages. For fifth and sixth grade in ELA, the students who were near or at expectations or achieving expectations were highest in vocabulary and research and that's in fifth grade and sixth grade and we are definitely proud of that. But it also shows us that across the board in fifth and sixth grade, we really need to be working on reading and writing process, some of those just language grammar skills and also critical reading and writing. So those are areas that we want to continue to get better in and really focus on, you know, what teaching practices can we put in place to improve in those areas. In math, functions, geometry and measurement, again, were strengths for us in mathematics for both grades. But number and operations and algebraic reasoning are areas where we definitely need to be focusing on improving and continuing to grow in our strengths, but also looking at ways that we can get better in areas of weaknesses. We do have a lot of academic support systems in place. We have an ABL lab that was provided through an after-school grant and that is basically based on education research that movement accelerates learning for the brain and activates the brain. And so we have a lot of kids who have a lot of energy and so we are looking for ways that we can utilize that resource to help our learners. We use accelerated reader, we encourage our teachers to display student work, to participate in our district art shows and other opportunities to showcase students' work. We'd love to have guest speakers, we do offer reading. We do offer reading and math intervention for our students who are struggling in those areas and that's embedded in their regular schedule. We have an outdoor hand-in-classroom, which is pretty cool and when the weather starts to get nice, that's a great place for us to move learning outside. We have a really nice deck that we're hoping to add some furniture to at some point for another outdoor learning space. We utilize a digital platform called iXL that basically supplements a curriculum that we already have and helps us, you know, with reading and math fluency skills. We partner with Podo Women's League for a yearly creative writing contest and they sponsored a really nice reception for our winners last week that we always look forward to. We are really trying to move more into project-based learning versus a lot of sit and gets because today's learners are, that's just not working for them. So, project-based learning is really something that we are trying to encourage and advance among our teachers and also give them training and encouragement to practice those things. We have quarterly incentive programs that celebrates students who have excellent attendance and excellent behavior and we give them opportunities for some extra recess and some treats and prizes and things like that. We also have a site spelling bee that qualifies students to participate in a site spelling bee and we've had some kids really, really close to placing in that the last few years. And then, of course, the, the district invests in summer school opportunities for our students so that, you know, students that we want to keep our eye on during summer, not just to help them with learning, but also make sure that kids that have food insecurity and things like that are able to be there and us to keep an eye on them and also help them to make sure that they don't regress during the summer. Climate is huge at our school and we really focus on the social emotional aspects of learning. Middle school is, is kind of a tricky time for kids and they need lots of that support and we do our very best to help them with that. One of the things that we have enjoyed adding last year, actually, is we do Feel Good Fridays. I had mentioned that Mr. Brayden, our Teacher of the Year, has a Feel Good Friday t-shirt. And so, what we do is our kids adopt a section of the school and their homeroom class, their morning mindset class, is in charge of helping maintain that. So, they take about ten or fifteen minutes on Fridays. We have music going and everybody kind of goes to their place and they work together. And our kids are pretty good sports and get a little territorial when people aren't taking good care of their spaces. So, this is one of our morning mindset groups. We are, we really have a strong character focus at PKMS. We do have bi-weekly guidance lessons that Ms. Perry, our counselor, provides. This year, we have added a new curriculum for guidance and it's character counts. It's really high-quality resources for our teachers and our students. We have a calm room and work with our students on regulation techniques when they are feeling overwhelmed and anxious and angry and all of those things so that they can, you know, regulate themselves. We have a manners and etiquette unit that we introduced in November in our reading classes. We do midday motivation, which is a nice way of saying that's when you are not doing what you're supposed to do and we could call it detention, but we try to put a positive spin on it. And so, in midday motivation, they meet with the counselor, they talk about, you know, the decision they made that resulted in them being there and kind of develop a plan for the next time in this situation, how can I do better? We do have monthly character awards, our morning mindset groups are our homework groups. This year, we've added a reset room and that is a transitional behavior opportunity for kids who are struggling academically or behavior or with behavior issues and of course, we have students of the month. We also have school-wide celebrations and those are ways that we try to build community across our campus. Christmas countdown is always fun. Homecoming week, of course, is district-wide. We have a kindness week in February, Read Across America, we just had last week and of course, Reverend Week, which is also district-wide. Our electives, we kind of tried to, we have a kind of an elementary mindset, but our kids have, are departmentalized. And so, our electives are ways that we try to connect kids to places where they can sit and find, find their people. And so, we're really proud of the electives that we offer that allow kids to do that, to find things that they're interested in and they're good at and kind of experiment in different things that they get to choose to electives each year. And so, middle school is a good place for that to happen before they get to junior high. We also have lots of teams, clubs and organizations and we've added a few this year. Let's see, show choir, they are the Sally Black's. That is new this year. And we have also added, at our students' request, a ball and golf club this year. Our clubs mean after-school, but we also, oh, and we added wrestling this year, which is super exciting and Coach Kennedy has done an amazing job. So, we have some, some groups that are competitive and then some that are just things that kids get to, kind of like those elective classes, learn about some different things that they might be interested in pursuing. And one of the things that's really important to us, because as you know, we, we live in a really generous and amazing community and we are the recipients of so many things that are amazing at our school. And so, we try to model for our kids giving that to the community as well. And so, we look for opportunities to do that. This year, we had sixty students who were served on an angel tree. Many of those students were adopted by our own teachers, but then, some of our community partners at churches as well. We have a Be the Change coin drive during kindness week and that money goes directly into our counseling center and it's for hygiene items and clothing and food. We sponsor a fine arts night where we showcase for the community, all of our different art, fine arts classes. This year, we collected over two thousand packages of noodles and before Thanksgiving break, we were able to share those with twenty-five families. And that's a really cool thing that we do for our teachers, actually deliver those to families during their planning periods. And it is really meaningful for our teachers to get to make that connection with families and so many of them are truly appreciative. Of course, parent-teacher conferences during kindness week. We do pastries for parents at morning drop-off. We have pep assemblies that invite our parents to kind of be part of that and get to watch their kids participate. We host See You at the Pole, which is sponsored by local churches. And then, we're always honored to be able to invite our veterans to come to our campus so that we can recognize them at our Veterans Day Assembly. We have lots of churches and civic groups that partner with us and sometimes just randomly show up with gifts and things for our students and for our school that we are so privileged and grateful to get to work with. There are lots of good things happening. So, if you are not following our Facebook page, please do that. There's also more information about our school on our district website and all of our schools. And you're welcome to come visit our school. We would love to have you there and let you visit our classrooms and meet our students and teachers and get to see the good things that are happening at PKMS. So, thank you very much for your support and your leadership and allowing us to serve students to the very best of our ability and to get to enjoy them. So, we, we have a great opportunity and a real good school and thank you guys for supporting.
Thank you. Discussion and vote to approve or not approve the calendar for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
All right, that'll be me. Just a reminder about how we do the calendar process here. We take our current calendar and put it in the twenty-five, twenty-six dates and then share it with principals, who share it with their committees, eventually with their staff and then we get feedback, make changes if desired and then you have the calendar that you see before. So, we also check with like KTC, Carl Albert and other schools too. So, this calendar that you're looking at is very similar to this year's calendar, other than we had requests to be out on Martin Luther King Day. We've had that request kind of the last few years. There are parades, there's events that some of our staff would like to participate in. And so, this year, we, well, for the next school year, we made that a day off instead of a professional development day and moved that professional development day forward to Monday. Other than that, I feel like the calendar is very similar to what you see. We have a hundred and eighty total days, a hundred and seventy-two instructional days, same as always, three work days and five PD days.
Anyone have any questions or comments with regards to the school's calendar? Roll call, please. Discussion and vote to approve or not approve a school auditor contract in the letter of engagement with Jenkins and Kemper for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
So, we bring this every year. Jenkins and Kemper has done our audits for as long as I've been here. I don't know how long they've done it, but the first is just the services that they offer and then we would need you to approve them to actually do our audit for this school year, twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
They've always done a good job for us.
Yes, they're always willing to help me throughout the year as well and they always come in and give us a lot of feedback that's really good for us.
Don't know that there's really actually any options out there, are there? I mean, that's pretty much as far as the quality that we get, there's not.
The quality that we get, yeah.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second his motion.
Roll call, please.
Head. McGeeby. Yelcom. Thompson. Adams.
Yes. Discussion and vote to approve or not approve the administrator's director's salary index scheduled for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Yeah, so, this is an item that we're gonna be bringing to you guys every year. Last year, we, we brought it to you guys. We had one adjustment on it last year and we have the same adjustment on it this year. There was a stipend that was with one of our administrators that really, we didn't know what it was for. So, what we, we agreed on and the administrator agreed last year and is fine with it this year as well. Basically, every year, we're gonna lower the index until we make up the difference and then at that point, we'll, we'll be able to start moving that person back forward. So, it is, that's really the only adjustment on here. So, anybody got questions on that? All the rest stay the same.
No questions, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion if you approve. I'll second his motion.
All right, roll call, please.
McGeeby. Yelcom.
Yes.
Thompson. Adams.
Yes. Head. Yes. Discussion and vote to approve or not approve a contract agreement with Waite Office Machines City Corp for copy machines for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Yeah, so, it's, it's time for us to renew our, our copy machines. We have been with the same company under the same contracts since twenty-twenty, so, it's gonna go up. We are adding three additional copiers. The difference in cost is two-hundred-and-forty-four dollars. Our total cost is thirty-five-hundred dollars. So, there was a seven percent increase with adding three machines from twenty-twenty to now, which is pretty remarkable, honestly. So, really pleased about the, the price that we're getting and the quality that we've been getting with our copiers.
I just want to make, it is white.
White, it'd be on GHD.
Not Waite, white, gotcha.
I did read what was written.
I know.
Okay. All right. Any questions or comments or a motion?
I make a motion to approve the lease agreement.
I'll second his motion.
Roll call, please.
Yelcom.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Head. McGeeby.
Yes. Discussion and vote to approve or not approve a lease agreement between Podo Public Schools and the Gathering Church for use of the movie theater located at twenty-two fourteen North Broadway Street, Podo, Oklahoma.
Yeah, so, on this one, we've got Giving Grace and the Gathering Church partnering together on a lease for the movie theater. I'm excited to get somebody in it. It's been sitting vacant and we've, we really do need to get somebody in that. The next item on the agenda, we'll deal with this as well, but for now, all we're doing is coming to you to see if we can get the item leased out.
And just because it came up, we had looked at this facility before to determine if there was any way that we could put it to use outside of using it for, you know, bringing the kids in there for, you know, movies and then there were costs associated with that to actually obtain the movies to be able to, to show them. So, we did explore, I mean, with our architect and everybody, the ability for us to use it and it just wasn't feasible.
Well, and you gotta remember, when that was given to us, this wasn't in place. This has really taken the place of what that probably could have been. So, from our end, we really are excited to get it leased out. And then, on the next item, I'll kind of explain the vision of kind of where I'm wanting to go with that, with your approval, obviously.
Anyone have any questions, comments, motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the lease agreement from Podo Schools and the Gathering Church.
Is there a second? Roll call, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Head.
Yes. McGeeby.
Yes.
Yes.
Discussion and vote to approve or not approve the activity fund transfers.
Yeah, so, this is a yearly item from the SEC. This is from football and basketball concession. It's part of the fundraiser group that they have and they moved down valid. Do you want to add anything to that?
So, they work, like each group works concession stand and they get paid like a hundred dollars or not and so, then we're just gonna move the funds from the SEC activity to that group's actual activity account. That's all this is doing.
Does anyone have any questions? Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second his motion.
That motion being to approve?
Yes.
That's all right. Roll call, please.
Adams.
Yes.
Head.
Yes.
McGeeby.
Yes.
Discussion and vote to approve or not approve out-of-state activity trips.
We only got one in your packet. That's our SEC taking their art kiddos over to Crystal Bridges Art Museum in Bentonville, Arkansas on April fourteenth. I think it'll be a really cool opportunity for our kiddos.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Crystal Bridges Art Museum.
Roll call, please.
Head. McGeeby. Yelcom.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes. FE policy student transfer numbers.
Yeah, so, this is an item that we have to get approved every quarter, so I bring it to you four times a year. We do have some changes on that. If you look through it on the second page, might be the third page, there's a list of numbers there, second page, that has every grade level and how many we're accepting there. And our PK for going in, looking, we're kind of looking ahead here, guys. For next year, we are gonna go ahead and move that number from one-oh-eight, which is what it was, up to one-twenty-six because we're adding a teacher down at PK. One of the things that we've done is we've really, we added a PK this year and we're gonna add another one next year. Every year, we're denying kids down at the PK level, which is, once those kids start in another school, it's gonna be hard for us to get them back. So, we really need to have our capacity numbers in the PK that we can get kids into our school system from the get-go. So, excited to get that piece in place. We, next year, we are adjusting our first grade down a teacher, but we're adding a TA in that grade level to help. We do have less numbers coming through, to the first grade than what's leaving, so, just making some internal adjustments there. And then, on grades three through twelve, we have adjusted the numbers up. It's gonna have minimal impact on anything, guys. Most of our grade levels have got twenty to thirty open spots in them right now at the secondary level. So, there's not a grade level at the secondary level that doesn't have openings already. So, I don't think this will have really any impact, but there are some number of changes on there from what we've been doing.
Anyone have any questions or comments? I entertain a motion. Is there a second? Roll call, please. Discussion and vote to approve or not approve surplus items.
Yeah, so we have three different items in here. The first two are fairly easy, and the third one is the one I was alluding to earlier that I want to make sure I talk about. The primary and upper have some surplus items in there, so nothing really major on those. The third one, though, that is the property located at 2214 North Broadway Street in Podo, Oklahoma. That is the movie theater. So as we're talking through the legal aspects of trying to figure out a way to move the movie theater, the vision that I've got and what I hope you guys see is that we really need that movie theater to be used. And right now, it's just not. What we want is, we want to be able to sell that at some point and use that money to start paying off some of the land that we've got. We're going to be paying interest, but we need to get that land paid off. The entrepreneur that comes in, we're wanting to be able to allow that person to have a low monthly lease, low monthly rent, be able to build some revenue, and then have a balloon payment on the back end. We need to have a balloon payment on the back end anyway, because if you recall, right now, Community State Bank is actually the primary owner of that, and they're giving us the ownership. But it'll be less six months, six years, three months before we actually gain ownership of that. So you'll see, if we can get this approved as we move forward, I'm wanting to put a seven-year lease agreement, lease purchase agreement in place. And in order to do that, I have to have the surplus. We have to put it out. I'll get it in the paper. We'll have it posted for a month, see what we get offer-wise, and then I'll come back to you guys with an opportunity for us to do a lease purchase, probably in two months. But that's the game plan, that's what I'm wanting. This community really doesn't have anything for kids that are indoors, so really wanting to be able to utilize that as some type of entertainment for kids indoors. So it should be a win for the community, for the school, and for whoever comes in on this. That's really the direction we're wanting to go with it. So do you guys have any questions on any of the surplus items? Or probably mainly the movie theater item.
If there's no questions, I'd entertain a motion. All right, roll call, please. Discussion and vote to approve or not approve a special education summer school pay reposition with a pay rate of $15 per hour, dependent on federal funding.
So our pairs have a great responsibility put on them, working with, helping with these students. And so we would like to increase for summer school. Currently, they are receiving $13 an hour, but they have to have different qualifications. They're working with the special ed students, and so we would like to increase that from thirteen to fifteen dollars for their summer school pay. And most of them will work like twenty days, some of them work twenty-three days for four hours a day during the summer.
If there's no questions or comments, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll second his motion.
All right, roll call, please. Discussion and vote to approve or not approve the resignation of a board member effective March thirteenth, 2025.
So unfortunately, you guys will notice in your packet that Mr. Jody Thompson has two different resignations in your packet. One is for the current appointed term. The other is for the elected term that will start in April. So he is resigning later this week, which makes it he can be an active board member tonight. So glad to have him tonight, but this will be the last meeting if you approve his resignation. If not, we just keep him forever, guys. So we have options. But I'm certainly appreciative of Jody and enjoy getting a chance to work with him, and I know all of you guys would say the same thing. So definitely going to miss you, Mr. Thompson.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank all of you. Staff, teachers, appreciate it.
Speech, speech, speech. We definitely have appreciated your service. And also congratulate you, though, on your promotion, and I know you'll do a great job there, so continue to serve your city. All right, well, with reluctance, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, we approve his resignation.
All right. Roll call, please. All right. I think he's leaving us regardless. No, no, it says March thirteenth. So if this meeting runs until then, anyway, no. Declaration of vacancy for board seat number five and discussion of the process to fill vacant board seat five.
Yeah, so got a chance to talk with our legal team, just make sure that we're all on the same page of what it looks like trying to fill Mr. Thompson's spot. Seat number five will be declared open as of March fourteenth, and at that point, we'll have to appoint a citizen that lives in the seat number five ward, and then the seat will be elected next year. So basically, what we're doing is we're going to be appointing in the April board meeting, and then in April board meeting, we do all of our officers anyway. So we would appoint, just like we were electing somebody. We would get them in place, would take the oath of office, and then after that, we'll do officer assignments and all that kind of stuff. From our end, if we have citizens that are interested in serving, what we're going to do is we're going to send them to the central office, and then what I will do is I'll get a chance to chat with them. I'll go through, make sure they live in the proper resident ward, make sure all that's good. And then as soon as we have someone that lives in the ward, is interested, we'll be able to bring them to you guys in April. In April, what we'll do is we'll go through an interview of all people that have put their names in the hat, that want to serve in seat number five, that actually live in the ward. So that's the process. Do you guys have any questions on how that process works or what we're going to be doing for the next month?
Soletti's report.
Ms. Cochran.
Quite a few different things going on. Probably the first thing to talk about is the new administration building at 3003 North Broadway. We did receive from the city a certificate of occupancy as of Friday, so makes us legal to move in. Still finishing up a few things, doing some audiovisual work in there right now. Hopefully gets finished up this week. Signage, I'm hoping, looked like it was going to be done today. So you might see that on your way if you're going north of town this evening. It might be lit up and ready to go. So everything's progressed nicely, though. And our plan is to move a majority of the things during our workday on March twenty-first, which is the Friday of spring break. Hopefully get a lot of stuff moved out at that point in time. So everything's looking good on that end. With respect to Panzi Kids GM, we have getting discussions started with a mechanical engineering group to do the mechanical electrical plumbing design for the HVAC system for the main gym at Panzi Kid. So we should hopefully see something in a few weeks on that, at which point we can solicit bids and hopefully get that work completed within the near future. I'm not going to promise by the end of summer, but could be, it could happen. Transportation-wise, OGN E set us a new transformer down at the bus barn location on Friday for the electric charging station for the two additional electric buses that we should be still on target to receive, probably August or so. But that's a step forward in that process. And we're still on track to receive our two new activity buses from Ross Transportation sometime in April. So those are the full-size buses. That'll be wrapped and very similar to the last bus we purchased back in 2021. So, so I don't think there's anything else. I think that's it.
I do want to mention that this should be the last board meeting we have in here, too. Kelly, did we get all the paperwork done to make sure that starting in April, we'll be out at the new location? So starting in April, we'll have a new boardroom that we'll be in, and we'll crescent it at our April board meeting. Our office staff is planning on moving over there and actually being in that building the week we get back after spring break. So that's the game plan for us.
Superintendent's report.
Awesome. So we do have some legislation that I'll kind of want to go through. I'm not going to go through it all, but there's a couple that I want to highlight. You do have a packet in there that kind of goes through a bunch of different items. House Bill 1280, this is one that's getting a lot of support. It's a sixty percent instructional cost piece that is on all public schools, which says basically we have to have sixty percent of our cost go to instructional cost, which sounds great. But as you know, the devil's always in the details. And currently, the state average is fifty-six point six percent. We have seventy-one schools out of the four hundred and whatever it is in the state that actually are at the threshold of sixty percent. The problem is that when they're talking instructional costs, that doesn't include child nutrition, that doesn't include counseling, that doesn't include transportation. There's a lot of things that it's not including that are necessary. We don't have to provide transportation, but boy, our community sure needs it. And if you're not at the sixty percent threshold, they're going to say that you have to shift current funds, and you have to go two percent every year until you're at sixty. So it's really interesting the way that they're proposing the bill. Now, it's still early, and the bill could change, but I do know that that's one that's going to be popular, and I think will continue to come back. We've also got another one, Senate Bill 26. That's going to be a big win for us. That's the one stating that retired teachers can come back at full pay with no restrictions after sixty days. So after sixty days, they could come back. With their teacher shortage, that's something that we need. Right now, it's three years that they're going to be on that limited pay scale. Well, if you're a retired teacher, it's probably best just stay out for three years. Well, then after that, do you want to come back? So having a sixty-day turnaround gets them where they can teach the very next year, and they don't have that layoff, and enjoy the retirement, and say, ah, I really don't want to come back. So I think that could be a win for us, especially with their teacher shortages that we have. There's going to be several bills restricting election dates, including board election dates. There's all kinds of bills out there right now, working on board members, when they can be elected and not. I think there's a lot of movement to try to get them all on the November elections, which coincides with a lot of political elections. So it's interesting with all this. But every year, it seems like they're trying to adjust the elections and when we can elect different things. There's one for bond elections as well. So we'll see what comes from that. There's still several bills making their way through that address certifications and due process for teachers. As you remember, this year, we had several teachers get their certifications held and a lot of stuff that we need to adjust. And so, and I'm glad legislation is dealing with that and trying to fix that piece. And then the last thing I want to talk about is cell phones. There is a lot of movement to restrict cell phones. And I just got done with a book last week, two weeks ago, called The Anxious Generation. And it had, by height, H-E-I-D-T. It had a lot of really good data in it. And I don't disagree that cell phones are a distraction in the schools. I would say that in Podo, we do a pretty good job with that. They don't have them at all at elementary building. PKMS, they're not in the classrooms. When you get into SEC and high school, they manage one a little bit differently. But we really don't have, I think, some of the cellphone issues. And there is a lot of data out there that supports that cell phones in a classroom with a kid is not healthy for that kid. And in fact, the way our technology's going, there's a lot of things that aren't healthy with technology and our kids. But anyway, so I do anticipate that we will have some legislation on cell phones. I don't anticipate it impacting us very much, because we pretty much are following what they would be putting out anyway. So any questions on any of the legislation? I know there's a lot in front of you with legislation.
Did we already cover all new business?
We did. We moved it up.
Entertained a motion to go into executive session. All right, roll call, please. All right, it is seven twenty-three. It is 7:23. All right, the board met in executive, executive session, discussed items of personnel pursuant to Title 25 Oklahoma Statute, Section 307B1. No other matters were discussed. Those present were the board and Mr. Kipnik. No action was taken and the board returned from executive session at 7:28 PM. I would entertain a motion with regards to 26.
Let me vote to approve the resignations. Karen Barnes and Lacey Miller.
All right, roll call, please.
Yes.
Thompson? Yes.
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 I'd entertain a motion with regards to 27.
Vote to approve the reemployment of certified employees in aisle 27.
I'll second his motion.
Roll call, please.
Yeah.
Thompson? Yes.
Adams? Yes.
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 I'd entertain a motion to approve or not approve the employment of high school teacher coach Mason Myers, PKMS sixth grade math teacher Valerie Repass, and primary early childhood education teacher Natalie Hayes.
I'll make a motion that we approve this far.
I'll second his motion.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 All right, we don't have anything under 29. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? No? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
I know, I would.
Signed in black.
Even on your boy, you gotta tell me how to do this.
Because you can't, it's easy to tell which one's your original. Because typically, your copies are going to be in black and white.